Hey sir, we're ready.
We're ready. Ready for you.
We're approaching them. Close up.
Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting of the Board of Supervisors for January 13th, 2009, to order. And roll call, please.
Supervisor Long?
Here.
Supervisor Zaragoza?
Here.
Supervisor Parks?
Here.
Supervisor Foy?
Here.
Supervisor Bennett?
Here. Thank you. And we are now at the moment of affirmation, and it's a real pleasure to introduce Everett Garman. He is the co-chair of Ventura County Support the Dream Campaign for the Martin Luther King Memorial in Washington DC. And since we're not going to be meeting next week during Martin Luther King Day, I thought it was appropriate to have Mr. Garman here. My relationship with Mr. Garman goes way back. He's a city employee when I was there as a city council member in the 90s. And he's -- it's a pleasure to have you visit with us this morning, Mr. Garman.
Thank you very much. It's my honor to be before your board, to speak on behalf of the Ventura County We Support the Dream Campaign, and to share a little about what the Martin Luther King Birthday Observance means to me and my family. As a 33-year resident of Ventura County, I have had the opportunity for the past 23 years to participate in the observance and celebration of Dr. Martin Luther King. He's an individual who was willing to give his life, and ultimately gave his life, for a belief that you need to judge people by the content of their character, not by the color of their skin. And I have had the distinct pleasure of watching my three young adult children embrace that ideal and be allowed to attend some of the finest universities this country has to offer. And as a parent, I attempted to instill in them, if you work hard, do what's right, do the right things, people will judge you for who you are, not by the color of your skin. And I've had the opportunity to spearhead a campaign here in Ventura County, to bring recognition to Ventura County, a unique opportunity which was given to an idea which was formulated about two years ago by the -- some of the residents here in Ventura County. We have attracted individuals from Angen, from State Farm Insurance, from Cal Lutheran John Witten, who doesn't even live in our community, thought the idea was a noble idea, and he is acting as our co-chair of our fundraising campaign. The endeavor will allow us, residents of Ventura County, to have recognition on their donor wall, not as a singular individual, but as a community. And that was an idea which the Martin Luther King Junior Memorial Foundation initially rejected. They said, "Our donor wall recognition will be for the singular individual." And I was disheartened when they wrote me and told me that, "Your idea simply won't fly." And after thinking about the rejection, I wrote back to them, and I said, "If Dr. King was on your board, he would not tell me no." Because he was about individual involvement, community involvement. And the board said, "You have a very good point, very good point." So they wrote back and said, "If you do all the fundraising and record-keeping, and simply send us your contributions, if we reach a monetary level, we will give recognition that Ventura County supports the dream." And it's been my privilege to be in the forefront. I'm not a spokesperson or anything. I'm a number crunch guy, that's what I do. But having the opportunity to be on the forefront and share some of my beliefs, life experiences, have allowed others to say, "Yeah, I want to be a part of that." And I want to thank you again for giving me the opportunity to speak to your board. And I have a gift that I would like to give to the board. I don't know who to give this to. I also have a couple of other things for the board members. Let me give mine. I'll give one for the Combs, because the Combs County support our program. And that's it. And again, I would like to thank each of you for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of the Martin Luther King Memorial. Also, I'd like to personally invite each of you. I believe in early December, the Ventura County Martin Luther King Observance Committee sent a letter to each of the board members inviting them to participate in the 23rd Annual Martin Luther King Birthday Celebration and Observance. And again, I would like to extend that invitation to each of you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Garman, if you wouldn't mind just staying at the podium for a moment. We, last week during our moment of affirmation, I think we appropriately started off with the peace movement, the global peace movement, and the sustainable -- global sustainability movement. And I think it's very appropriate for our next, for our second board meeting to be about the whole issue of tolerance, and certainly is celebrated by Dr. Martin Luther King. So in our moment of affirmation, if we could just have a moment of silence to reflect on the great accomplishments of Dr. King, and the fact that we won't be here, but we certainly will want to celebrate that next week. And I'm going to hold open the moment of affirmation. I know we have a public speaker card on it, so I'm going to hold that, but I'd like to ask Mr. Garman to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you. Right hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and in everyty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
And not to destroy the moment. If I could ask the board if they would assist us. The campaign that we engaged in was seeking $1 from every resident in Ventura County. And it's very difficult for a small group of folks to reach all 834, 35, 38,000 folks. But within the workforce here at Ventura County, the dollar, I don't believe, is asking too much. If the county could spearhead, organize, a fundraising campaign for every employee, just a dollar. If you want to give more, because people always kick me when I say, "Just a dollar." But that's what we were trying to do, raise a dollar for every resident in Ventura County to say that we support the dream. And if I could ask the board to put its weight behind that endeavor, it would be greatly appreciated.
Well, you just -- hundreds of county employees just heard that message because they're listening to the board meeting right now, so you've gone a long way since beginning to get that message out.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and good luck with your campaign.
I might want to leave some donations.
All right.
And we have a website, BCWeSupportTheDream.org. And again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garman. And again, I'll hold the moment of affirmation open. Let's go to the minutes, please. We need a motion to approve.
I'm sorry. Moved and seconded.
There we go. Our minutes motioner was --
Yeah. Moved and seconded. My motion?
Was seconded.
Moved and seconded. It's ready -- we're ready for a vote?
And they'll abstain.
You've got to go to "on the floor," to the bottom left, "on the floor." Bottom left, "on the floor." There we go. Okay, it's time for us to vote. He's having trouble, since he's not the chair, he's having trouble over there, right? All righty. The minutes have been approved. Agenda review?
Agenda review.
Our CEO.
Consent item 14. There's a revised board letter and a revised recommendation number two. You've received that in your packet, and it has been changed on the web agenda.
Okay. We need a motion to approve the agenda. It's modified.
Moved and seconded.
It's time for us to vote. There we go. The agenda has been approved. And now, before we go to our consent items, we will start -- we'll go back to our moment of affirmation. We have one speaker on the moment of affirmation. And let's see if I can get him to show up here. It's not showing up as a speaker.
Oh, is that right?
Okay, Carolene Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. The state is still without a budget. I've been attending these meetings for 22 years, and I'd like not to hear the same empty, parrot-like repetition of the sentences that deals with the budget. Affirmations are not sentences that are repeated like a worn-out record. So maybe if we could, you could change your way of describing the budget and the state without it, it would go a long way in helping you to affirm that it's just not money alone that runs this county. Thank you.
We're now at the consents calendar. Consent items 10 through 17 are on the floor. Been moved and seconded. It's time for us to vote. She stepped out of the room. I am trying to run this all electronically today if we can. And so now we're at public comments. And hmm, you can't get speakers on when you're on the agenda part, can you? And our first speaker during public comments is Heather Sosa.
Good morning. My name is Heather Sosa, and I am a Client Benefit Specialist for, for the Human Services Agency, and have been employed for the county since 2001. I am a member of the SEIU 721, and I am extremely proud of the work that my union and my department does on behalf of thousands of Ventura County residents that are in need of social services. As some of you know, we have addressed you in the past over some serious concerns regarding workload for client benefit specialists and social workers. In fact, it was during negotiations that we last addressed you on this very issue. Since that time, you have hired a new agency director, and since November, we have had two labor management meetings, and the department has taken steps in addressing the problem through a focus group. The Joint Workload Committee, outlined in the memorandum of understanding, has met once. Although it is just the beginning, we are optimistic that things will change. I am here today to give you our last two communication pieces from our labor management meetings, and to request individual meetings with each of you sometime this month. We want to share our concerns about this present economy, and how it will mean more people, not less, that will be needing social services. We would also like to share with you the efforts SEIU is making on the state and federal levels to make sure the vulnerable don't become worse off during these times. Either I or someone from SEIU will be calling your staff later to schedule an appointment. We look forward to resolving more of the issues concerning workload, and remain optimistic about a positive resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Our next public speaker is Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. I have an issue here I'd like to settle for myself. I have this Ventura County Star article of October 21st between John and John, and there's one thing that disturbs me in it, and maybe we can get some clarification. John, welcome. I've been arrested over nine times without ever being convicted, so I'm speaking from some experience within this article here. On page two, I'm quoting, "He was screaming out sentences, and so I got on the phone and called city manager, and so hello, and I called Police Chief Crowback." Was that on your cell phone? The thing that disturbs me about this, the average citizen cannot get on the phone and call the city manager and call the police chief. I read the article, all of this time spent -- the article. All of this time spent, and I don't know if it's your lack of knowledge, but all this time spent, I sent it to the DA and said, "There's no crime." And when I'm out on the street, I hear obscenities all the time. So I would like an explanation why the city manager, the police chief was called and the average citizen is not afforded that same opportunity. I have now an article from two experts from Cornell University, published in the Journal of Personality and Social Psychology, unskilled and unaware of it, how difficulties in recognizing one's own incompetence led to inflated self-assessments. This is a true story. Listen to this very closely. In 1995, MacArthur Wheeler walked into two Pittsburgh banks and robbed them in broad daylight with no visible attempt at disguise. He was arrested later that night, less than an hour after videotapes of him taken from surveillance cameras were broadcast on the 11 o'clock news. When police later showed him the surveillance tape, Mr. Wheeler stared incredulously, quote, "But I wore the juice," unquote, he mumbled. Apparently, Mr. Wheeler was under the impression that rubbing one's face with lemon juice rendered it invisible to videotape cameras. Because we bring up the unfortunate affairs of Mr. Wheeler to make three points. The first two are non-controversial. First, in many domains in life, success and satisfaction depend on knowledge, wisdom, or savvy in knowing which rules to follow and which strategies to pursue. This is true not only for committing crimes, but also for many tasks in the social and intellectual domains such as promoting effective leadership, raising children, constructing a solid logical argument, or designing a rigorous psychological study. Second, people differ widely in the knowledge and strategies they apply in these domains with varying levels of success. Some of the knowledge and theories that people apply to their actions are sound and meet with favorable results. Others, like the lemon juice hypotheses of MacArthur Wheeler, are imperfect at best and wrong-headed, incompetent.
We're now ready to move on to board comments. Mr. Foy, would you like to start us off?
Thank you very much. A couple of things. I'd like to adjourn in memory of people on this list. In last week, I adjourned in memory of a fire captain, Don Winkler, and I forgot to mention that, wanted to mention that he retired in 1996 after 27 years with the fire district. Most of his career, he lived in Simi Valley until he relocated in Sonora. While in Sonora retirement, he continued to work with Cal Fire, filling air tankers during the fire season. So I just wanted to make sure that that was noticed and also relative of Bob Roper. So a couple of the things, too, is that this wind's been crazy and I know that fire season doesn't end, so I guess there's still a red flag with wind divides. We've got to be careful. And I also want to congratulate Steve Morgan and his staff for their 2008 Award for Excellence by the California Counties Facility Services. I know we're going to see a presentation coming up pretty quick on that, but I thought it was great that there's so many people that go out for that award and we do such a very good job with that. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Parks.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention two things. One is the Community Leadership Committee, which is and oversees the Mental Health Services Act, looks at the effectiveness of those Prop 63 funds, is in need of more people to be on the committee. Preferably, we're looking at individuals that have either experienced some mental illness or is a family member of people who have mental illness. And also looking for some cultural diversity. If you're interested, you can contact my office or the Mental Health Department, Behavioral Health Department, but we would like to be able to fill all those slots. And it's a really good committee in terms of being able to get accountability for those funds. I hope people will be encouraged to apply. Lots of openings. Another thing I wanted to mention is, and I just see it was the headline in the Star today, I was able to participate in a telephone conference that was with the California Environmental Protection Agency, where they made kind of an unusual decision, which was to, instead of pursuing super fund, national super fund cleanup site for the Boeing Rocketdyne site, they decided to instead use our own California law that was passed about two years ago, that Senator Kiel got enacted SB 990, which, and the reason being is that SB 990 will have the effect of cleaning it up at a higher standard than the national super fund site otherwise would have been. So I think that's interesting. I know we fought to make sure that Halico was a super fund site, but it was rather unusual to actually be supporting not making Rocketdyne a super fund site, but it's because of SB 990.
Let's hope that vote isn't taken out of context on this one day.
Right. And then I would just ask that the board close in honor of the people on this list. And I'd like to call out two individuals. One is a wonderful senior citizen, Rose Marie Baldine, and she was actually our Volunteer of the Year, Senior Volunteer of the Year in 1999, as well as the Volunteer of the Year at Los Robles Medical Center. And I know that she will be very missed in our community. And then also a very sad loss of a young man, 14-years-old, Billy a boy, Cody Fadalk Badalato. And he was from Oak Park and just another, Oak Park seems to have gotten some pretty tragic deaths in the last month. And I know the community is rallying around the families. And that concludes my comments.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zirkos.
Thank you. You know, I, first of all, I want to thank, you know, the, last week, you know, we had a little welcome reception for myself over at the Welcome Center in Oxnard. And I want to thank Supervisor Long for being there, our CEO, Marty, and our county council, and numerous staff members that were there interacting with the City of Oxnard officials and other business individuals. So I just want to thank him for the kind words that Supervisor Long shared about myself and the county and city. So I just want to thank her for that and the county. In addition to that, I'd like to adjourn in memory of my constituents here in the City of Oxnard.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Long.
Yes, good morning and thank you. And please, I have a few things I'd like to talk on today, this morning. So I'll try to move through them quickly. The first is to adjourn in memory of folks from the 3rd District, calling out one particular gentleman, Dean Wood. Dean was a 28-year career with the US Navy, retiring at the rank of Lieutenant Commander, serving in Magoo, but, and very active in the community. And although a Camryal resident, he was very dedicated to serving on several boards that crossed many lines. One was the Oxnard Port Running Me Boys and Girls Club and also Casa Pacifica. So he served many communities very well and will be missed by the community. And that's my list to bring forward. As the SEIU representative mentioned this morning, in these tough economic times, we are, and we know we are, going to see rising numbers in folks who are in need of our services, whether it's for general assistance, food stamps, variety of programs that we offer for eligibility, through the eligibility program to assist people in these tough economic times. One that I'd like to bring up again, and I've mentioned it now a couple of weeks, over the last few, over the last month, and that is the Ventura County Homeless Person Count that will be taking place on Tuesday, the 27th of January, which is a board day for us. But I'm asking for those county employees who have time and wish to take their own personal time to participate in this count. We have over 100 volunteers and we could use probably another 100, frankly. And this is countywide. It's in every community and in the unincorporated area where we know we have homeless encampments or homeless folks who are living in their vehicles. This count is very important to us in receiving federal and state dollars in the future and as important for us to really know what we have in this community in the way of children and families who are homeless as a result of this economic downturn and the variety of other reasons that people end up homeless on the street. I think we need to, and I will pass this down, I know that the county CEO is assisted with calling on county employees, again, who wish to take their own time and give to this homeless count. And there's a need and it doesn't take a lot of your time. We're talking about a mourning, basically. And there is strong support from the communities that you may live in, that you will be with teams of people. It's not, you go out, you don't go out solo on your own to do this. And there is obviously the full engagement of the Human Services Agency, the social service task forces in each city, and our law enforcement professionals. And it's very important that the volunteers feel like they do have protection where they may need it if they go into riverbank areas, alleys, et cetera, so that their, the law enforcement is very alert and attuned to this homeless count that takes place. And in most cities are fully engaged with it. And I know that our professionals in the Sheriff's Department will be there to assist and serve where they're needed with this homeless count also. We, you know the statistics, growing population, you know that we have folks who are homeless for a variety of reasons. I think this is very, again, very important that we participate where we can and support this effort. The other thing I'd like to mention, I know that we've probably all received this in our board offices and otherwise, this is the Buy Fresh, Buy Local Food Guide. This is the first edition of it. And this was a collaboration of the Community Alliance for Family Farmers, the Environmental Defense Center, and the Ag Futures Alliance to create this wonderful guide and booklet that really talks about what we are so blessed in this county in growing and the different ranches and the different products that are grown. And to really encourage our community members to support our farmers' market and to support wherever we can, whenever we can, to support our farmers and support grocers and those who buy local products in both Ventura, Santa Barbara, and our county areas. And I think that's a good message. And I thanked our Ag Commissioner for supporting and working on this and think it's important that we support our local farmers. I'm not going to whine and cry about the state budget because obviously it's, yeah, you want me to, huh? I will say to you that CSAC has talking points out regarding the state budget. The key points are that, one, we need a budget solution and we needed it yesterday. We need to restore access to credit, to our credit markets. We need to support a balanced budget solution, not something that's going to just move some shelves around and we continue to be in this condition for the next decade. Infrastructure investments are essential to stimulating our state and local economies and local governments help drive the economy. And to impress upon the leadership that it's us, we at the local level, who look in the eye at our constituents on a day-to-day basis and have to deal with the difficulties that they're facing with, they've lost a job or lost a home and are challenged with, at the local level, to keep their families safe and to feed and shelter their families. One of the things that CSAC and the Urban County Caucus is doing is putting together three, I'll use forum for lack of a better word. It's, and it really came through our lobbyists saying, "We need to reach out to the new supervisors who are now new assembly members or new senators and hold three particular forums in the month of February to give them kind of a one-on-one on what is county government? What do we do? How are property taxes collected and dispersed and the difference between special districts and county and cities? The history of property taxes in our county?" I'm highlighting some of the potential areas they wish to cover with these new legislative leaders. And to give them that one-on-one on what took place with realignment in the 80s and what does that mean to us at the local level when they, when they reach into our pocket and shift local revenues. It's the first time we've done this. I think, I think, I think it'll be valuable to do. I think we do have folks who, if they come from serving as a supervisor, they should have a better handle on this. But if they, if they don't, I think a refresher course or introduction to it is always valuable. So that's some of the proactive things CSAC and Urban County Caucus is doing to, I hope, make a difference in some of the decision-making that takes place, particularly when it hits us at the local level. Last thing I want to talk on is the Economic Development Collaborative and Vasitas having their annual meeting this Thursday, the 15th, and I'll provide these to you. You probably have received information on this. Again, I would encourage you to participate if you can, if only in a portion of the annual meeting. There'll be installation of officers and there'll also be keynote speakers, a panel of folks talking about the issues of the economic conditions that we're challenged with in our county and in our state. And I find it's always a, more than just a networking opportunity, it's an opportunity to, for businesses to talk to the elected leaders who participate and vice versa. If we take every step we can to assist our local small businesses and our local economy, it will serve us well in the long term because that's, those are the folks who are going to help in this recovery. The last thing I will provide is, coming out of the Economic Development Collaborative meeting last week, there is organizations that came together, the Association of Defense Communities, California Association for Local Economic Development, Council on Competitiveness, and the Council of Development Finance Agencies, the International Downtown Association, the National Association of Development Organizations, and the National Association of Development Companies. They came together and they basically put together an economic stimulus recommendation for the US economic development organizations. And we know that it's fashionable right now for everyone to have a stimulus idea, package, agenda. This one, I think, was very well put together and the collaborative felt the same way and adopted in general concept to say, "We can support that we have an investment in shovel-ready infrastructure projects to strengthen the long-term competitiveness of the economy and what the priorities should be for that. To increase access to capital rapidly to get business activity moving. To use existing agencies to manage and administer stimulus activities, don't create a new one. To invest in green technology to meet the short-term goals of stimulating our economy and long-term goals of obviously developing a stronger economy and competitive economy. And to emphasize workforce development, to help unemployed workers to transition to new jobs." I think these are some good points and just worth sharing with you. And that's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. And as you were passing these items out, it reminded me of the good work you do over the years, keeping us informed of lots of different, outside of county government, things that are going on. So we really appreciate it. The, I would, in my comments, again, like to remind everybody, particularly if they missed our moment of affirmation, that Martin Luther King celebration will be next week. The board will be dark for that. And it is probably a more, more momentous celebration next week as we also will be inaugurating the first African-American president. So things have come a long way since those days that most of us remember when Martin Luther King... Luther King was out leading the peaceful demonstrations that so remarkably changed this country. The second thing I'd like to point out is we read in the newspaper, and although it was a report about information that we had released in November about where the county ranked in terms of the jobs, getting jobs for those people that have been on welfare, what I'd like to ask the CEO is that, I know significant efforts have taken place since November when we first released that information, even though it was in the newspaper, but I'd like to make sure that we're informed and in six months, sometime next September, perhaps, when we come back from our holiday break, if we could have a report in terms of how we're doing with that. And if after I finish my comments, the CEO has anything that she'd like to mention about that, but I'm sure we're all interested in seeing where that goes. The third thing I'd like to do is ask the board to adjourn in memory of George Ryan. And George Ryan's a really unique individual in Oak Park, huge supporter of the Oakview Park and Resource Center, served on the board until he became ill. He was the honorary mayor of Oakview and he contributed personally to the Oakview Park and Rec Center over $10,000. And this was not a man of means, it was just an average citizen in Oakview who just became passionate about the value of the Oakview Park and Resource Center for the citizens of Oak Park. So he certainly, he will be missed and that's a big hole to fill in terms of that positive energy that he brought there. And then the final thing, I'd like to let all the board members know that I'm going to be working with the CEO on trying to identify a time for us to meet with our department heads and for us to meet, and we've had, we've done that in the past. We're going to try to find a format that everybody feels is productive, to do combination goal-setting, find out, you know, but that dialogue, some very good things have come out of that dialogue, and sometimes we haven't gotten as much out of it as we'd like. So what, in talking with county council, if you would communicate directly to the CEO to avoid any potential Brown Act problems about that, but I will be working with the CEO. We're trying to target, we think, the end of February. We may, and we're initially thinking of actually doing it at a board meeting, cut the agenda way down and be able to do it right here and see how that works. On the other hand, that may not facilitate the kind of dialogue with our department heads that we think. I will also be communicating with some of the department heads to get some input from them, but I'd like to do that. The other thing that I'd like to get on the radar screen is whenever it is that we actually lock that in and decide to do that, and I think it's appropriate for us to do it at the beginning of the year. In doing the calendar that's on our agenda for today, I noted that it seems to me that what we ought to do is also do the January 2010 calendar because, for example, this time, there was a lot of question as to when are we going to be sworn in and we hadn't really officially adopted a calendar for 2010 yet, and so we're alternative to Roberta and everybody's calling Roberta, et cetera. What I would like us to consider, exactly right, what I'd like us to consider is using the first meeting in January and just make that a traditional meeting where we actually do do our goal-setting with our department heads, et cetera. It would solve some of the problems for the clerk of the board in that it is difficult for them to get agenda items and all of that stuff ready during New Year's Eve and New Year's Day and everything. This is an agenda that they could put together before we actually broke for the holidays, yet when we come back, that first meeting right after the holidays. So I just want to throw it out there to let you know, I'll be bringing that back. If you have input on that, feel free to let myself or Ms. Robinson know also. But those conversations are out there, wanted to just try to give you a heads-up as we try to push forward with some of the things that will be on our agenda for the year. When we get into March, part of why we're trying to shoot for February, we get into March, we'll probably start to get more and more into budget adjustments, budget items that we will have to deal with. So thank you very much for that. I'd ask the board to adjourn in memory then of the people on this list. And we'll now turn to item 29, Department of Airports.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Don Oshning, the Deputy Director for the Airports, and the item that you have before you is our annual ASEP, our Airport Capital Improvement Plan. Each year, the FAA asks all airports to submit their capital improvement plans, which are, and these are projects that are only eligible for grant funding. Other projects the airports will be doing that will be paid by the enterprise fund will be brought to you at the budget time and through the CEO's CIP process. So the projects that you have here are, it's a six-year plan. The FAA asked for a five-year plan, but because of the difference of our fiscal years, we put together a six-year plan to show the most recent year in our plan. I'm sorry, the winds have really played havoc with my allegations. We asked that you approve the six-year plan and authorize the Director of Airports to apply for grants in the first two fiscal years, fiscal years 2009 and 2010. And the reason we asked for this is because of the difference in the fiscal years and that the FAA may offer us a grant for fiscal 2010 prior to our next budget cycle. As a matter of fact, the FAA has been really, the funding has been really crazy and they've asked us to move a project up at Oxnard, our east ramp project has been moved from 2010 to this year because they're anticipating maybe an economic stimulus package that will give them some funding and that we may be able to do that project.
I think every project in America's been moved up to be ready for the, in the next 90 days.
And I think that's the whole point is that, you know, it may not happen, but at least we at the airports want to be ready if it does happen so that we can take advantage of that.
Get your asphalt contracts in now.
Basically, that's all I really have. Our six-year plan is for $26 million at both airports, basically divided equally at $13 million each. And as I said, these projects will be brought back to you through the budget process for funding and also the CEO's CIP process.
Thank you very much. We have Kathy Long.
Yes, Mr. Chair. This entire package was brought forward through the Airport Authority. We spent a lot of time looking at each component of this and then there was unanimous support for these projects, so I would move the recommended action.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. And the motion has been approved for the recommended actions. And we're to item.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We're to item 30, Appointment of Ventura County Employee Retirement Associate.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Our office is asking your board to appoint Albert Harris or reappoint Albert Harris and Joseph Henderson as public member representatives to the retirement board. Both of these gentlemen have extensive experience. As you can see, Mr. Harris has been serving since 1969. That's quite a bit of knowledge about the 37 Act retirement system. So we're recommending today that your board support these reappointments for three-year terms. And I would also like your board to be thinking about how we are going to replace this knowledge base in the future, who's skilled out there in the community that we can put on the board. As you know, the retirement board decisions make, have a tremendous impact on our cost of doing business. And so I think it's very important to have people who have an understanding of the real implications related to this. So with that, I request your board approve this recommendation.
I'm moving. Need a motion? Thank you. Supervisor Foy, we need a second.
Second.
There we go. It's been moved and seconded. We're ready to vote. Everybody's so anxious. I know. And we're at item 31, and that's the Service Excellence Award Program.
Chair Bennett, Members of Board, Executive Officer Robinson, Matt Carroll with the County Executive Office, good morning. I'm excited to be here before you this morning on Agenda Item 31. It requests your board approve the new service excellence, what we're calling the C-word, employee suggestion and award recognition program. You'll recall on September 18th, your board, after hearing presentations on process and cost-saving improvements by the Healthcare and General Service Agency, directed our office to come back to your board with a new employee recognition and awards program in this area. We in turn work with the Service Excellence Council, that's the new council that coordinates and oversees the county's process improvement program, felt there was a good fit to work with them to get their input and help draft this program. The program before you, as recommended by the Service Excellence Council, recommending, or that they're recommending, recognizes team, and that's one of the core focuses here, team, as well as individual projects, suggestions, and improvements that are, that result in, and a key word here is measurable, measurable monetary savings, increased effectiveness, increased revenues, improved safety, or general improvements to county operations. Now, this program is intended to complement the existing STAR program, not replace it. The STAR program is geared toward individual employee suggestions for cost savings only, whereas this new C-word award program is meant focused primarily on recognition of team awards as well as individual awards for a variety of areas that lead to measurable county process improvements as well as cost savings. There is a small stipend associated with the program, about $500, up to $500 its budget within the county executive office, and that can be used exclusively for mementos or award recognition events within the department, so there's not individual monetary awards to employees as this program, the STAR program would still be in place for that. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions your board may have.
Supervisor Foy. Oh, you are good.
I was wondering if this might be expanded to other departments beyond the two that are mentioned in here, like Human Services Agency, Research Management Agency, Public Development Agency.
That's a good question. It is intended, and we don't say that, and I apologize, it is intended to be county-wide. Any agency or department director can, or any employee can nominate this. The nomination would go to the Service Excellence Council, who would confirm there are measurable and significant improvements that have been implemented, and so it is available to all agencies and departments.
Oh, thank you.
Supervisor Foy, I'm going to go to you. I just want you to note that Supervisor Argosus requested speak, so if people, if people use the request to speak, they'll keep everybody.
He used the right method, let him go. He used the right method. I got a good training.
I use that old, just punch the button. You're well-trained. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you so much. And I just, I want to commend Marty and Matt, you know, and all the county employees for this program. You know, recognizing people for the work they do as teams, I think is extremely important. And I'm very pleased with the county staff that I met to date. Even though there's no monetary awards, if the dollars are not there, I think that just recognizing the employees and appreciating their work, I think, is extremely important. So I believe also that informal, informal groups do a lot of work. In my experience as a business owner and also as a department head for the city, I've found that that really pays a lot of dividends. Even though the county has hundreds of millions of dollars in budgeting dollars and funds, $6,000, I think, is a minimal amount to use for our employees. And of course, there's a limit of $500 and there's proper safeguards to make sure that the money's well spent. So again, you know, I want to commend, you know, staff, you know, the CEO's office and Marty and Matt and the rest of the individuals. I think it's an excellent program. I just want to share that.
Thank you. Supervisor Foy, you want to?
Nobody's got their.
You could actually hit the.
I could hit my button. I won't do that, so I'm official. There you go.
All right.
Yeah, learn the system, I'm sorry. Matt, I do appreciate this. I know we talked about this before and I think this is, this is excellent, especially in a time when we see economic downturn and we need to find every way to be effective and efficient. And the lean program that you've installed in this county is doing wonders and I think that's tremendous. The people that are in the front lines doing the work, they really understand what goes on and how to do this. And so I appreciate the opportunity to do this as teams. We had individuals before and I think, and there's a lot of individuals because it usually probably starts with an individual sees something, talks to somebody else, and then it expands. This is an opportunity for us to, I think, to be leaders in our community and the county and the state, finding ways to save. You don't always have to cut programs, you can find ways to be effective and efficient to save. We saw GSA, we saw the hospital come to us before and showed how they've done some of those same things. And I look forward to seeing what great opportunities these people in the county can find. And just like Supervisor Argos said, there's some tremendous, tremendous people out there and they've got some great ideas and we just let them run wild and we'll see some good things. I'm excited to see them come before the board and make their presentations. But I also like one piece that you're doing is making sure there's merit in everything they do. A lot of great ideas, but can they be effective and can they save time, money, and efforts for everybody else? So I'm very excited you put this together. I knew it took some time and some effort to make it happen, so thank you very much.
And I did mention your board will be the venue where the presentations are brought back. We'll try to schedule one a quarter.
Great, great, thank you. Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you for bringing this back to us. When this was first proposed, those of us who have, are elder, think of former, perhaps, programs that, what this does, let me be positive here, what this does is it captures the good work and direction that the CEO and we've asked that we move in this process improvement for all of our county systems. And to look at things, approaching them as teams and approaching them as enhanced services, efficiencies, and value for our customers, the public. So I think to look at this as a program that really highlights the extraordinary, that highlights that enhanced accomplishment that goes above and beyond perhaps what was done in, you know, days before and practices and otherwise, that whole process improvement and excellence will give us the opportunity to both acknowledge that, recognizing it, encouraging it, and supporting it. And really, a very small way in the sense of the monetary investment here, but a large way, and I think the message to our employees and the encouragement to them to reach to excel. So thank you. Appreciate the work.
Thank you. I just want to make a couple of comments. In this economic downturn, it is the opportunity for us to re-energize and rethink again, you know, how we're doing government. And so I think we really do want to celebrate when people come up with those ideas. And I think that there's an interesting thing, when I came onto the Board of Supervisors, I was impressed with how far the county already was ahead of most other places, and this is eight years ago, with energy savings, you know. We had a shiller, we had some creative designs, and I have consistently said that the county of Ventura does more and gets less publicity for it than any other organization that I know of. I mean, I see other entities, you know, leading the charge of their climate change stuff and there's this big headlines about what they've done and they're just, they're just doing something that maybe we were doing four or five years ago, or they say they're doing it and they're only sort of doing it and stuff, and we're sort of at the other end of that spectrum. We're doing a lot, but we don't have, we don't have much in the way of a coordinated way to get that publicity out, whether it's climate change or other tremendous cost savings. But over the years, there's a real strong culture here. I think of so many of the things that were started and they took a while, but, I mean, the way our county clinics and hospitals are run is innovative thinking that started a long time ago and can get better. But most other places do not, you know, haven't grabbed all of those different cost advantages that we've grabbed. So what I like about this program is it's going to give us a chance, once a quarter, to try to, you know, even that spectrum out and make sure that we're trying to get, you know, adequate publicity out there for the things that are happening and hope that that publicity will reinforce and sort of snowball this culture up and up because we will need every piece of creative thinking we can possibly come up with. A year from now, when we're sitting here, it will be a very different environment and when we'll really need this program. So I welcome and congratulate everybody that got this going and, you know, as we read in there, this doesn't replace the STAR program, but those kinds of programs need to be re-energized from time to time. This is the re-energizing sort of that employee recognition, so I really appreciate that. And our CEO would like to speak. And our CEO would like to speak.
Yes, I, first of all, I want to, I want to thank Matt and, and the committee for working on this project. I think it's part and parcel of what your board has asked us to do in terms of the last year initiating a refocus on re-engineering, re-press, uh, refocusing ourselves on process improvement. And I think that this program is part of the fabric of that, that change. And so, I appreciate your support for this because I think it is another message to our employees and our organization that we're on a different path. And so, with that, thank you, Matt.
Great. We're, I think we're ready for a motion. Moved by Supervisor Foy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Supervisor Long. We're ready to vote. Just to let your board know, we'll be back the first meeting you have in February to give you a presentation on the program itself and some of the accomplishments and the approach Marty has us taking with that, so we'll see you more. Great, thank you very much. We're at item 32, Office of District Attorney, Grant Program for the National Children's Alliance, Safe Harbor.
That's correct. Thank you, Chair Bennett, members of the board. I'm Adam, CEO. I have some good news this morning. We got a grant for the National Children's, from the National Children's Alliance for our Safe Harbor program, the amount of $20,000. It is a, a general support kind of a grant. We continue to go after those opportunities whenever we see them out there. We know it's a tough, tough fiscal climate, and it's getting tougher to actually come across those opportunities and take advantage of them.
Great, thank you. Ready for a board motion?
I would just comment, you know, we're just talking about awards programs, I think you guys would win the award for getting out there and applying for the most grants and between you and the sheriff's department, it's just wonderful to see. It's nice to know that you can do that.
Well, thank you. I have something called the money tree in my office. It's a little plant, and it's getting bigger every day. We just keep getting it water, so.
Thank you. We're ready to vote. Okay, we're at item 33, and that is the annual presentation of the calendar by the, by the chair, as recommendation for the calendar for this coming fiscal year. And like I mentioned, when we come back in February with the department heads thing, I would suggest that at that point in time, we look at, at adopting the January of 2010 calendar, just so we, as we're leaving in December, we all know what's going on in January. So, with this, I would move the recommended, oh, do you want to speak? Okay, good. Supervisor Foy.
I'd like to speak. I have some information that I'd like to present on this, and I appreciate, I like your idea though, of trying to, to get January's calendar all set up prior. I think that's smart, be, be as efficient as possible. One of the things that I'd like to do here is, I got some handout. I just want to take an opportunity for us to look at, we just talked about cost-effective, cost savings and efficiency in government. One of the things that I'd like to do is present some information over the last three years of board meetings. And now, this, Mr. Chair, this isn't a thing to show us how quick, quick we get through board meetings. I just want to give you some.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm just pushing this, Roberta? There, oh, see? I did it. Yes. Okay, what I'm looking at is, what we tried to do is we tried, over the last three years, we're gonna see these in here, and you're gonna see it. We tried to go through and, and give the amount of time that we spent on all these different meetings we had. And what's not included in this is gonna be any budget meetings and any meetings we had off-site, special meetings, because those are, those are generally short meetings off-site, and I didn't want to skew this whole thing. But what I was trying to look at is saying, is there an opportunity for us to say, how can we be more effective and efficient? So, if you continue and you go through this, you're gonna see that about 64% of our meetings the year before were less than five hours. Here in 2007, about, almost 50% were less than five hours. And if I look, did I go? There we go. 2006, about 63% of our meetings were less than five hours. And so, when I look at that, I say, is, is there the opportunity for us to find some ways to condense a little bit more of these and, and to try to save some costs? And when I look at costs, I look at some of these soft dollar costs here. We have department heads who sit in here, we have productivity of employees who have to listen and attend these meetings that we do. We also have, you know, some hard dollar costs. We have preparation of these big books, we've got time spent, materials, putting them together, environmental impacts. Supervisor and I driving up here earlier to do these things. You may be coming regular. And then, we're running this, this meeting, we're lighting this, uh, this, this room. We have a sheriff that sits in here. So, those are some of the things that I look at. And so, what, what I was proposing is, on our next piece, we have, if that calendar comes up, did it come up? Whoops, okay. If you look at this calendar that we have, and it's all on your screens too, about seven of our meetings, months, we have three or less meetings a month right now, seven of the months, because like this month, we're gonna have some or less. What I was proposing, if you look on here, is the possibility that in four other months, that we would maybe take that center one out. You can see where it's in red, the possibility of moving that and removing that meeting and giving us a consistency, so we're three or less meetings a month, trying to bring down the amount of extra costs that we incur. I did leave in June, the extra meeting, if you look at it in June, you'll see it, the red is off to the side under Monday. What I did is that, just in case budget required a, a little bit of extra work, and it may be that you could say, well, we, if we did that, we could be very consistent and have only three or less meetings during that month. And, and in that month too, and if we needed to, we just put it back as a, as an extra meeting if needed. But on a consistent basis, we always know that we can add a meeting or take away a meeting if we needed to. I guess I just looked at it saying, how are some of the opportunities for us to continue to find a cost-effective ways to save money? As we know, we have a lot of department heads that sit here, have a lot of people listening to this, and when I look at this, that only ended up being about four different meetings that we would adjust out of the calendar, and it would be pretty consistent with the other seven months that we have on a way, on a way to save money. So, that's what I looked at, and I know, and we do, of course, as a board, have the right to do what we need to do with meetings, and anytime we need an extra meeting, we can always call one. So, again, there's a lot of cost, a lot of effective and efficiencies, maybe in reducing a few of these. I know in my own city, Simi Valley, they've gone from four meetings down to two meetings a month as the city council, doing the same type of thing, trying to be effective. But what it really came down to is when I look back there, is those numbers of meetings. We had a lot of meetings that were three hours and four hours, and I, I think, we all know that this is not the work that we all do, and I think the public knows that too. But I think while we're here, while people are sitting here, there's the opportunity, if these meetings went an extra half an hour, an hour or so, to make up that difference, that would be effective for us, and we would again be saving time, energy, efficiency, and I think that our, our staff out there who have, who have to prepare for these meetings on a regular basis, like we just saw the DA come up, if he had two of those in one meeting versus one, that would be a more effective use of his time. So, those are my comments.
Thank you. Next speaker up is Mr. Zaragoza, Supervisor Zaragoza.
Mr. Chair, just following up a little bit on Supervisor Foy's recommendation. If we're coming back in February, you know, to look at our schedule, what if we look at the cost savings for the four or less meetings, you know, having the cost savings that, for example, multiplying the amount of staff that shows up to the meetings and the clerk's time and, and et cetera, and see what kind of cost savings we can have by limiting those four meetings? And also, the, probably the idea that, that we share with the public, that we're not having less meetings because we don't want to share information with the public, but, but that, all we're doing is consolidating to be more efficient and to, and to see how we can make our staff probably utilize that time for other projects and, and other items that are important to the county. So, just as a matter of adding more input to, to that. And I'm not sure if the board's gonna go for that, but I'd be kind of, I'm wondering how, what the savings would be, you know, if that action was taken.
I would, I would welcome a little bit of time to digest this. I think it's a, it's a, it's just a number of things that are just starting to pop into my head. I hadn't, hadn't thought about this, first time I've seen this calendar. So, I guess what I'd like to ask us to do is just bring this back in two weeks, and that way, we've got two weeks to everybody, you know, kind of noodle on it and have whatever, if we could, if we could do that then, yeah. By then, we may know where we're gonna go with the department heads thing and, and all that stuff. So, so, I'd like to make the motion, modify my motion, and have the motion instead be for us to revisit the calendar issue in, uh, in two weeks from now, but I'd also like to make it clear that we adopt, we adopted January calendar so that we are officially scheduled to come in on the 27th. And then, why don't we just, for the benefit of everybody, let's adopt that we, we'll be here on February 3rd and 10th, so that at least we, you know, Roberta can do some of her official notifications and, and all of that stuff. Fact is, we are, February, there's no change between our two calendars. Why don't we adopt the January and February '09 part of the calendar and postpone the rest of this decision for two weeks? That work for everybody? All right, great. Thank you.
If it's possible to have this information that doesn't include the closed session hours, so we really have an idea of how many hours. Often times we'll end up, is there any way to do that? Okay, because when you look at us having nine and 10-hour meetings, I would imagine it was part of the fact that, you know, there was some major litigation that required closed session. That would be my guess.
Yeah, because closed session on the first, because Roberta used to record closed session in the meetings, but it's been, an hour's been added to the meetings in 2008, 2007 for closed session.
Yeah. As I understand this chart supervisor, you've only included an hour, assuming one, one hour for closed session. You've added an hour.
Right. Only in the, in the last two, because if you go back at, in 2007, original time included in closed sessions, you, you see it in 2006. That was, because Roberta's program used to record exactly the amount of time.
Okay. Any other questions? We might as well get the questions out while we're, while this, any other questions at this point in time? Alrighty, so I would make that motion to adopt the January and February '09 calendar and postpone the decision on the rest of it until our January 27th meeting for us to analyze this information. It's been moved and seconded by Kathy Long. Motion carries. All right, great. Okay, we are now at item 34, and that's receiving file of presentation on the restructuring of the Resource Management Agency. Mr. Stevens.
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, Ms. Robinson. For the record, I'm Chris Stevens with the Resource Management Agency, and the item we're presenting to you today is a, a brief presentation on our proposed reorganization of the, and some of the enforcement activities within RMA. And then, the second action is approval of some of the re-classifications that are required to accomplish that. And John Nicole is here to assist and answer any questions primarily related to that second item. My task is to take care of presenting to you our proposal for how we're going to restructure ourselves within RMA. Can I get the PowerPoint? We can just.
Do you need a copy of it?
No, I've got mine.
We got hard copies.
Yeah, we can go through this. This is fine.
That's fine.
Yeah, as far as I know, in any event, we'll, we'll forge ahead. Now, I don't have to worry about this clicker. That's one, one benefit.
You are so good.
Very good. If, most of the board members recall, in April, you had, received a presentation, a consultant report, did an analysis of our permitting processes and made a number of recommendations. And since that time, you've received further reports, there's been quite a bit of activity going on, and not only within RMA, but within the Public Works Agency, our Pollution Control District, a lot of entities involved in our permit process to take a look at improvements that we can, can do. Actually, one of the recommendations within that report was to look at a consolidated enforcement division within the Resource Management Agency with the added, the additional recommendation that enforcement of the grading ordinance further be incorporated into that. So, what you have today in front of you is really kind of phase one of that recommendation, which is the creation of the enforcement, consolidated enforcement unit within the Resource Management Agency. And what, what it involves is really a realignment of our existing staff within RMA to get them better organized and consolidated. And what we've included, and you see the, the third slide in your, your handout, and I don't know whether it's readable on, on what you have, it's barely readable in mine, but this is a organizational chart of our existing organization with RMA. And what you can see here, I hope, is that we have approximately 18 individuals on staff involved in various elements of code enforcement. They are spread across four divisions. They are spread across planning, building and safety, our weights and measures division, and then we also have within our operations division, some support personnel that are involved at various elements of it. One, one thing I would also note, and I don't know whether you can, can pick up on that in the chart, but within our, our weights and measures division, what you see shown there is a manager position overseeing that program. That, that program, that is something of a, a vestige of how we were organized many years ago. That program actually used to be within our operations division, and then when our operations, our deputy director on our operations retired approximately five years ago perhaps, that was temporarily assigned as a direct report to the RMA director. Since that time, we had, that, that position was vacant for quite some time, and really the activities of the weights and measure division are an enforcement activity, and shoehorning it back into operations did not necessarily make perfect sense. So, it's been sitting there kind of as a smaller unit directly reporting to the Resource Management Agency director, which from an organizational standpoint is a little bit of a, an oddity. And so, the proposed reorganization that you see on the next slide, in some ways, we'll, we'll rectify that is by, ah, very good. We did turn that in, I guess. Oh, okay, very good. This is the, the proposed organization, and we'll actually now take what is currently a vacant manager position and upgrade that position to a deputy director to create a, this unified division. And we'll now have that deputy director reporting directly to myself rather than the manager kind of off on, on its side. That is one of the reclassifications that's required to accomplish this. A second one is you'll see the management assistant position. There is current, that is a current position. As I said, we're not creating any new positions. It's currently in place. That is a, a reclassification, kind of an upgrade of that position, because they will have some additional administrative duties overseeing, providing that administrative support for a larger division. And then, the final reclassifications that, that really are at the heart of the reorganization are to take what are now the planning enforcement staff, which are in the planner classification, our building and safety enforcement folks that are in the building inspector classification, and actually creating a new classification that will cover both of those activities, what we're calling a code compliance officer. And we needed to do that in order to really accomplish what we wanted to with this, to create the efficiencies and allow the, these, each of these individuals to accomplish both of these tasks. So, we'll go to the next slide, and it will kind of, I think, when you go through these benefits, you'll kind of see what I'm talking about. We will, by having a single new classification that can, an individual that can do both code enforcement for the building code as well as the zoning code, we will be able to have a single individual go out and do an inspection where we may have both of those code violations in place. Currently, as it would stand today, if we had received a call, we, and someone had reported a zoning violation, we would send out a zoning code enforcement officer. If they noted building and, potential building and safety violations, they would then notify building and safety, we'd send out a second inspector to confirm those, and they each have their individual processes that they work through. We coordinate them as best we can, but the fact of the matter is that they are, have different responsibilities, different training, and that by creating a single new code compliance position, we will be able to combine those functions and send out a single individual. We'll have an awareness and an understanding of both those codes, and we can simplify that process. There are processing consistencies. Currently, they have different processes, and while without some code amendments, we, we can't make them perfectly consistent, but by having a single individual, we can ensure that there aren't things that might fall through the cracks, miscommunication. That will allow us to move staff. They're trained in both. If we have a greater need in, in, in building issues as opposed to zoning, we'll have more staff available to shift to that, and vice versa. The centralized and more efficient administration, this is one that I think is particularly near and dear to the hearts of our customers. When we have a violation that involves both the building and the planning code, they will go through two distinct processes. They will receive two letters describing those at separate times with separate points of contact. Should they get to the point that they require reimbursement of costs, they will get two separate bills. That's just the nature of the system. By combining those things, we will obviously streamline that administration and simplify that process. Lastly, the, and this is related to my earlier comment about the management position upgrade, we will also have greater oversight and accountability. We will have a single individual responsible for managing our, our enforcement programs, rather than having to perhaps shuttle customers or, or complainants or anyone between divisions and getting ourselves kind of mixed up in that kind of a thing. Right now, you'll have a single individual who will have responsibility and authority within both of those programs. So the bottom line, really, for us, for a lot of these recommendations, where we think we're going to go is we're going to have better customer service for the, for the customers that we're working with, and ultimately, what we hope, we're going to have a, a more effective enforcement program. And over time, what we hope is that as we get, get, get caught up and maybe even ahead, we will actually have more staff available to do some of the other things that we haven't been able to do in the past with, with our code enforcement program. And of course, if we do, if we are fortunate to get to that point, we'll be back to the board, that will probably raise some interesting policy questions about how we want the program to operate. But we're not there yet, and hopefully, hopefully I'll be back here in a year, a year and a half, asking those kind of questions. This, unfortunately, with any, any good thing, there, there's often some costs associated with it, and we wanted to kind of outline those for you briefly. You can see them up there. We're looking at kind of an ongoing cost at, at next year, approximately $72,000. Unfortunately, unlike the district attorney, I don't have a money tree in my office. And so our proposal to you, and we will be back to you in the spring as part of our fee schedule, is if the board approves this reorganization today, we take that information, it goes folded into next year's budget process and our next fee calculation schedule. And our, our anticipation is that our revised fee schedule that we have to create to cover the new classification, which doesn't exist today, we would be able to cover that $72,000 because it would be folded into the calculation of the fee. And then, as I said, we haven't been able to do that work yet. We need to, to take this step first, but that's, that's our expectation. As you can see, we also highlighted some potential savings. I did not try to quantify those for you, but they're all related to those kind of efficiencies that I just talked about, related to things, you know, things as simple as fuel, which is one less car trip out to that site, to supplies, and, you know, which are all of the letters and the things that we need to prepare, and obviously the staff time involved. Last thing I wanted to highlight for you were some next steps. If the board approves the recommended actions today, we will need to complete our, kind of our programmatic policies and procedures. We've been working with them. We formed a little staff team a few months back, and we've been working on those, and they're, they're kind of at a point now, waiting for the action of the board before we can, can take them to the next step and finalize them, but we'll need to get those in place. We need, we want to begin cross-training. We're developing a training program that would cover at least this, this initial year of functioning, so that we can get the planners trained in the building code and the building, inspectors trained in the building code. We're developing kind of a rollout communication plan for the public and our customers and, and residents in the unincorporated area. And then, as I alluded to earlier, we'll, we're, we'll get right into our budget preparation for next year and our update of our fee schedule. And then start turning our eyes toward the second phase that was recommended in the April report, which is preparation for taking on enforcement of the grading ordinance. And so with that, I, I don't know if you have any questions for me, if you have any for John Nicole, but I'd be happy to answer them.
Do we have questions? Supervisor Long here on first.
Yes. Question on begin cross-training. Any estimate of what time it'll take to do solid cross-training? Because you are asking folks who have expertise perhaps in both areas, but, or generalists in both areas.
Yeah, our, you know, our expectation is that within one year, we would be, we would, we would be complete where we would be sending out that single individual. That's our goal. Some, some of our officers have more experience. We have some on staff that actually have done that in previous cities that they worked in. So, so obviously, they're going to come along faster than others. We have some that have been doing enforcement for 23, 25 years. Just through osmosis, they've picked up a lot over the years. They'll be quicker. So we'll be at varying levels, but we anticipate everyone could be complete within a year.
Okay. And the other question perhaps from Mr. Nicole in the board letter references that there was, that this has been reviewed, shared and discussed with service employees, International Union, SEIU?
Yes, it has. And as of this point, we are finalizing those job classifications, then we'll be getting them back to the SEIU to discuss with them exactly how this transition plan will go.
Yes, I, I'm glad to see this move forward, the idea of having one individual that can go out and investigate code complaints on various zoning and building compliance issues. I think that's, that's really going to be helpful, and hope it would be a cost savings. I understand that we need to do some extra training as a new type of position. My, my desire is to see grading ordinance taken over pretty quickly, too. That will, I think, really help even in the coordination among the different departments. I know from our office, being able to know that there's one person that's, we can go to when there's, when there are issues, would be very helpful. And I'm wondering about the timeframe for that.
That's a good question. We just had yesterday a meeting with Public Works Agency as well as the Resource Conservation District to talk about, most specifically, the hillside erosion control ordinance, which is somewhat of an odd appendage to the grading ordinance and how we might bring that in. We had a four-hour meeting, went over a lot of issues, and I guess the short answer is there's still a fair amount of work to be done. I think the target was to be back to the board with something of a workshop on this, perhaps March, maybe, maybe early April, for the board to provide some direction so that they can start the drafting of ordinance amendments. We don't necessarily have to wait for grading enforcement to move over until that's been, the new ordinance has been adopted. But I think until we see what those changes are going to be, it, it might be a bit premature. So I guess perhaps as soon as would be mid-spring, late spring, and then, of course, if we wanted to wait for the ordinance amendments, it would be sometime longer than that.
And I'm, I'm usually impatient on that kind of things anyway. The structure, the organizational structure that you are putting together, will that be sufficient to incorporate the grading in there, or are you looking at having to revise it?
At this point, we're looking that this is going to be adequate, and, and we haven't gotten to that level of detail with Public Works as to their staffing and how some of that may need to shift over. But it would, by just putting this in place, it would be a much simpler exercise to bring them over, because we have a place for them to land if it is in fact a position or an individual. But our expectation is that it will be accommodated.
And this was one of the recommendations of the lean system, wasn't it, to have this coordinated effort?
Yes, yeah, in the, in the report that Tom Berg presented to the board in April, yes.
And then, I'm just looking if there's a, maybe some less costly way of doing this. You know, I see a public rollout. You know, what is the benefit of a public rollout to who shows up on your property when you have a code violation?
The, the, I think the primary benefit of the public rollout for us, and, and, and maybe that's a little too grandiose of a term, but it's a way for us to get the information out to the public, that they now have a single point of contact, that there, there is a process in place, get that information out to them, whether it be phone numbers, email addresses, it's that kind of a rollout of information that we were talking about. And not only them, also internal staff to the county, other agencies that, that come across, various things out in the field, just getting all of that information out so that they know who to call.
Okay. And then just, we expect then perhaps in the spring, we'll have a review of bringing in the, the grading ordinance?
Yes, I, I would think as part of, that that would be a topic of discussion at the workshop. And as I said, we were looking at March, is what we were talking about yesterday afternoon at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Chris, you know, you're, we're not adding another department, we're just renaming that, that department, right?
That, in essence, yes.
From the weights and measures to the code compliance division?
Right.
And, and the other thing that I, I notice in your proposed organization, it says code enforcement down in the bottom, is that going to be changed to code compliance?
That's our, that's our intention, yes. In effect. That's, that's becoming kind of an industry standard, if you will, when we look at how other cities and counties are doing it, code compliance is.
So we're being more proactive than, and also, we, our complaints will come in on a call-in basis, right? So we're not proactive where we've looked for, for infractions and so forth? Are, are they reported by other divisions to, or departments?
They can be reported by any number of, of locations, but, but we, we tend to not be proactive. We're not out sweeping, you know, the community, looking for these. We don't, haven't had the staff resources to do that.
But if we have other department or other divisions that, that are going by, they just don't ignore it, and they say, hey, um, there's a violation, or there's a trumbull of oil or something out in the, in an alleyway or streetway and so forth?
Absolutely, yes. We do get what we kind of call departmental referrals that often come, they can come from a board office, they can come from the assessor, they can come from any number of places.
And also, you said your potential savings, you know, to defer the, that additional cost. You'll probably have that information for us on the savings for fuel, supplies, and staff time that, that you're going to.
Well, yes. I mean, one of the things that we're going to be doing here is trying, trying to put in place some metrics and seeing what, what, what we're, what we're doing today. I mean, you know, everything from counting our reams of paper to, to the number of miles we're putting on, on county cars. So we'll have that, that information, and, you know, a year from now, we can do some comparisons.
And additionally here, I think you have funding coming in if you have a compliance problem where somebody comes in and, and has to take out a permit because in order to meet that compliance, you also have additional funding coming in from that.
That, yes. If they were to abate their violation by coming in and getting a permit, yeah, they, they would then go into either the planning process or the building permit process and they're, they're paying fees and whatnot. So yes, that's true.
Yep, thank you. I don't want to keep this going, but I just want to say thanks for making, putting all this together. I know that was a big task when Berg did his report, and a lot of changes going on in your department, and I just appreciate all the hard work you're trying to make it happen for the citizens out there. So thanks very much.
Okay. I, my comment is, is simply getting to consolidated enforcement is something that we have been asking for, for a long time, and it is a pleasure that it's, that it's finally here. I just think that there's all kinds of efficiencies from the citizen standpoint, from staff, and, you know, from our ability to have somebody to contact and not have to contact two people. I can't, can't imagine how many times somebody'd say, well, all of this was a violation, but then we also have to go, go to grading because there was a grading violation. Well, almost every time, if there's a building violation, there's a grading violation associated with it, and they have them separated, it just didn't make sense. I welcome this. We're looking for a motion.
I'll move.
Supervisor Floyd moves it. Supervisor Long seconds it. We're ready to vote. We have a number of 10 o'clock items. Is the board all right starting into them? Okay. Alrighty, let's go ahead. Sure. Supervisor Floyd, I'd like us to do the correspondence agenda while we knock that out.
So move the correspondence.
So, Roberta, can you get us there? There we go. Good. Moved and seconded, ready to vote to receive the correspondence agenda. And. And now. Great. Correspondence agenda has been approved. It is now 10 o'clock, and we have a number of 10 o'clock items. And our first 10 o'clock item honoring the Ventura County Economic Development Association. And Supervisor Long.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. It is my pleasure to bring this before the board for adoption, to recognize a longstanding association, business and economic development association in our county. Bill Barado is here. If I invite you to step up to the podium, Mr. Barado, he's the, the CEO extraordinaire for this organization, has been with it for years, and I, I believe Mike Solacces may be showing up.
He's not going to be able to make it.
He's not, okay. Um, Mike's the current chair of VACIDA. Most of you know what VACIDA, the association is, and, and again, being the wise one, I recall the 10-year celebration, so, not 10-year, I'm sorry, 50-year, good heavens, I would be old. I take that back. But I wanted to bring them into the boardroom. I mentioned this morning under board comments, the annual meeting coming up on Thursday.
Good, thank you.
But wanted to bring them in separately regarding this celebration of their 60th anniversary because it is a milestone. And I, and I'd like to take a moment to talk about the history of VACIDA, again, being a very important business association in our county. In fact, in 1949, it was established as a quasi-department of Ventura County Government, which folks probably don't know, and, and it was known then as the Ventura County Chamber of Commerce. At that time, was funded through a special district, and its responsibilities were to review planning documents and proposals and advise on land use issues. In 1974, the leadership realized that they, they wanted to be one of advocacy for primary industries in the county, oil, agriculture, and others, and felt there was potentially too much conflict in utilizing public money for that advocacy. So they, the, at that time, the chamber then broke away from the public sector and became then known as VACIDA. And in the absence of public funding, fortunately, there were some strong individuals who stepped forward to say, okay, we will raise the funds that are needed to make this a strong association. And that group of five included Ed Lyon, Carl Lothrup, Bob Mobley, Dick Fawcett, and Pat Patterson, names probably familiar to most of you. They provided the needed startup funds, offered private offices, donated hours of volunteer time to VACIDA, so it could develop as the advocate for and defender of business and industry in our county. In the past two decades, VACIDA's been very active in many projects that are familiar to us, and, and could not have, I think, been as successful without their leadership in BRAC 95 and in BRAC 05 in protecting our naval base in Ventura County. I recall in the early days at that time, as a, a staff person with former supervisor Maggie Kildee going to meetings related to the air quality protection district, APCD district, and the new rules that had come in in the early 90s on air quality. And VACIDA was a leader in helping to mediate and resolve differences to really, really offset or prevent costly court battles in trying to work with how to achieve the success of improving our air quality and do so with a cost-effective model for business and for our entire community. VACIDA's led the way in working to develop a skilled and trained workforce. It's always been a priority to look at the future workforce needs and work with the schools and, and partnership, and it's been a longstanding part of their model to do that, to, again, build a stronger business future for all of us in the county. Important role in bringing the Channel Islands University online, and, and very much a strong supporter, again, for that public educational institution and the goals we have for the needs of business and the workforce in the 21st century. Most recently, VACIDA was recognized as the champion of job growth by the Workforce Investment Board of Ventura County, the small business advocate by the Pacific Coast Business Times, and the distinguished business leader award by the Ventura County Leadership Academy. So stepping down to present this to Bill, and, and we will acknowledge it again during the annual meeting on Thursday. I think it is a great celebration of a strong association of business leaders and industry in our county that has carried forward the interest of, of the small business person, the corporate business person, the industries, and the workforce, which then, of course, benefits all of us in this county. So I'll step down and present this, Bill, if you'd like to say a few words.
Sure. Kathy, thank you for the kind words. Supervisors, on behalf of the board and the members of VACIDA, we want to thank you for the proclamation. VACITA, we want to thank you for the proclamation and the recognition, gee, I wish I could take personal credit for all of the nice things that Kathy just said, but I'm just the figurehead, all of the accomplishments have been done here in Ventura County, not just by the members and board of VACITA, but working collaboratively and cooperatively with supervisors, city councils, special districts, and all. I don't have to tell you that we face unprecedented times here in the country and in the county, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you in helping to address some of the major challenges ahead for Ventura County, so thank you.
If you took credit for all of this, you'd be very old, though.
Well, the interesting thing about that, I always remember that VACITA was created in 1949 because that's when I was created too, so it's easy for me to remember them.
There you go.
One, two, and three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll say you Thursday.
Okay, you want this for Thursday?
Yes, thank you.
Well, it is a real pleasure to welcome Leo and Marilyn Valenzuela into the boardroom for resolutions by supervisors Aragosa and supervisors Long, and I note that they're here with some of the members of the salt of the earth from, I'm sure, from the union supporters and stuff out there, so I want to welcome you all here, and I'd like to turn it over to Supervisor Long and Aragosa for this.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, you know, it's really an honor to present this resolution to Leo Valenzuela upon his retirement and his work, dedication, and passion to labors of Local 585, and I'd like to read a little resolution here, Leo, and if you might want to come here and to the podium, whereas Leo Valenzuela was born April 3rd, 1945, in Auctionard, California, he's the youngest of seven children, and was raised and educated in Auctionard, with a little encouragement from his father, Leo joined the laborers' union, 585, and promptly began his job working for his brother, Jesse, and whereas in September 6th, 1965, Leo was drafted into the army, serving the 25th Infantry Division for a 13-month tour of duty in Vietnam, after his tour and completing a two-year obligation with the army, Leo went back to work in construction's labor local union, and whereas in 1979, Leo became a field agent for the laborers' union, 585, under the direction of his oldest brother, Johnny, I wonder if Johnny's here today, if he's not, okay, in 1988, Leo went on to become the business manager of Local 585, whereas in addition to Leo's work with Local 585, he held many other positions in the community, including the 5th District Vice President of California Labor Federation, American Federation Labor Congress of Industrial Organizations, Vice President of Southern California District Council of Laborers, various offices for the Tri-County Central Labor Council in Ventura County Building and Construction Trades, he also held numerous positions in the Southern California Labor's Trust Fund, and whereas being from a Native American ancestry, Leo and a number of his family worked hard to form the Oak Brook Park Schumash Indian Corporation, and negotiated 427 acres of parkland in the city of Thousand Oaks for the Schumash Cultural Center, where Leo's brother Johnny took over the Oak Brook Center, they found through DNA that sample that the family was not Schumash, but was a San Fernando Band of Mission Indians, Seven Feathers, and have since transitioned to support the ancestry. Whereas Leo has remained active in the community, volunteering 25 years in Little League, five years with the Channel Islands Youth Basketball Association, has worked with homeless Vietnam veterans at the annual veteran's stand-down, Leo also served as the executive board member of the laborers' union, assisting many high schools and baseball fields, dugouts, fences, and unions, annual fundraiser for the Auctionard College Baseball, that raised thousands of dollars. Leo has also been a leader in political arenas, involved in the campaign election of Congresswoman Lois Capps, the defeat of 226, the defeat of Major V, and also the election of Assembly Petronella, but you forgot John Aragosa here. Now therefore, there'd be resolved that the Ventura County Board of Supervisors takes its great pleasure in honoring Leo Valenzuela for his work and dedication and passion to the local laborers' union, 585, fighting for the rights of working men and women throughout Ventura County, and the board of supervisors also offers best wishes for a long and well-deserved retirement, filled with good health, happy times, shared with his wife Marilyn Valenzuela and four children. Supervisor Long.
Yes, thank you, and it is so great to have you come into the boardroom, Leo, and to celebrate with you your life's work, I look forward to the event on Saturday evening where there'll be great celebration with many of you, although it's always bittersweet when someone of your strength and integrity who's given so much of your life to this good work and will be missed by many, I asked some folks what kind of things will they miss, and they said things like, things that you say, like, you know, wrong answer, that's not what I ask you, listen to the water run, I don't know what that's all about, order me a toothpick and water, hmm, okay, haircuts grow on company time, that must be a classic, dog and pony show, things, those Leoisms, I'm sure, are known and loved by all you've worked with, and it's a pleasure to be able to honor you today in the boardroom for that life's work, and to then celebrate with you Saturday, so we'll step down with John and present you the resolution.
Thank you. And while they're going down, Leo, I'd just like to point out, I've admired your work over the years, but when they started to read the resolution, and I heard about the Little League and about working with the homeless vets, it's a whole side of you that I wasn't aware of, but it reminded me that it's people like you that are what hold our community together and make it special, not just with your career, but with what you do with all of those other things, so you will be missed, right, I hope you'll stay active with all of that. Thank you.
I don't think many of us can say Leo without also saying Marilyn.
Leo and Marilyn. Thank you, Leo.
Thank you.
Thank you, and again, you know, just to share with you, you know, my last campaign, we walked and it rained, and it would rain like crazy, and I want to thank you for that.
You all know how to do that, so why don't you go?
Thank you.
Okay. Let's take one with it open.
Yeah.
There you go.
You want to share some words with me?
Sure.
I am honored and I'm humbled, and I thank you very much for this recognition, but a lot of this has to go with the family, not only the personal family and with Marilyn, but the family of organized labor that has been very instrumental in some of my successes, and I think a lot of that has to go to them, because as we all know, it's done as a team effort, it's not done as an I-I-I, it's done with the we and everybody together. Yes, I've got about 45 and a half years in the labor movement, I've always had a passion for the working men and women, especially in the county of Ventura, lifelong resident of Ventura County, and I'm also proud of the fact that in the past, how the county has worked with organized labor, and some of the big projects that were done here in the county alone, the facility that we're in now, the whole government center was done 100% organized labor with skilled labors, and all the building tradesmen that represented those workers are here, and so we've got to give it up, and also, that real nice private resort that you have on Todd Road was also built by organized labor, and it's still there, but it was done by union skilled labor of every trade, and I got to give a lot of kudos to our building trades, Steve Weiner, who was our CEO of the Tri-County's Construction Building Trades Council, and Tony Skinner, who was the Ventura County representative, took over from Bob Guillen, who was around for many, many years heading Ventura County. I'm going to continue working in the community, I've got a few things that I'm doing now, working and trying to create something for the working men and women for good benefits, good wages for the working men and women of this county, and I think it's very, very important, and what I've noticed in the past from all of you from the board, you're very sensitive to the needs of the people that are unemployed in this county, and you're trying to do something, and being prudent in what you do, being physical conservative to the point that you are representing these people in these districts, and I'm really honored and humbled to come before you, and to thank you also for the work that you've done in this county. As far as Labor's Local 585, we go back, when we first got our charter back in 1936 in the city of Ventura, my nephew, David Valenzuela, who's the new business manager of Labor's Local 585, is a fourth generation Valenzuela, what the organized labor never believed in was a lot of nepotism, but it just happened to work that way for some reason or another, and he's going to continue servicing and representing the workers in Ventura County, all of the county, and all of your districts, the best he can, he's been, he was my assistant for about 16 years, he's been in the movement a little over 25 years, so he's going to be around quite a few years, and he'll be around to service, so I've got really him and the past staff that I've had, my two field agents, Anthony Mireles and Billy Saha, and of course, our secretary, Isabel Serrano, who's been with us a few years, who's done a fabulous job in keeping things in order in the office, and I want to thank them for the support that they've given me all those years, and one thing, you were talking about the Schumash Interpretive Center, that was quite a while ago, I negotiated with the county for 15 years, especially if you all remember Mad Shaver, Mad and I didn't hit it off very well at the beginning, because I think we had some personality conflicts, but we had seemed to iron that out, and for the will of the people, from the city of Thousand Oaks to the county, they gave us a deed of 427 acres of parkland, we did the reinterments of 125 remains and artifacts in a special place in Oak Brook, you ever have a chance to go visit it, you probably have, it's really awesome over there, and there was a lot of blood, sweat, and tears that went in there, but it was done, and my nephew and I, we were able to get a grant for about $3 million, and we designed the park and the building and stuff, but the county paid a very integral role in the success of that interpretive center, I thank you, I'm humbled, I'm honored, and thank you very much.
Can we bring all of the union members, and let's take a big photo here? And also, Mr. Chair, we can present this Saturday too.
Yes.
All right. Gooch in, big close happy face.
Wait a minute.
All right, and then over here, if we could just gooch in. Ready, one, two, and three, that would help if I have it on. One, two, and three. It actually looks better when I have it on.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. No. No. I'll fill it. Trouble in everything. Thank you. Thank you. Well, good. I got the invitation. rate adjustments. Ready, why are you so excited to come up here?
Good morning, Chair Bennett, members of the board, CEO Robinson, Betty Pacala with Water and Sanitation Department of the Public Works, AGDC, I have given copies of the presentation to clerk with the board, I hope you have copies with you, we tried to put this presentation together so I can give you a background of the district and the challenges that we are facing, and also the reasons why we are recommending the proposed water rate increases, Mr. Chair, with your permission, this is about less than 20 minutes would be my presentation, if you'd like me to cut short, I'll be glad to do that.
Do you need 20 minutes? If you can go, if you can go, does the board need 20 minutes, that's my question? Do you need?
Well, I'll go fast.
Is it essentially the same kind of issues, the rising energy costs and all of that stuff that we have?
In addition, we also have infrastructure issues.
So why don't you emphasize the infrastructure stuff a little bit more, since we just last week or two weeks ago heard the other information, okay, if you could cut it down to closer, if you cut it down to closer to 10, I think we'd appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Waterwood District Number 19 provides potable water service to residential, commercial, agricultural, fire protection to the community of Somas and surrounding areas to more than 1,000 customers. Here is the district boundary. This is LA Avenue, this is towards Ventura, Moore Park, here is a Somas traffic light right here, and our boundary is on the southeast city of Camarillo, on the east, it goes just past Balcom Canyon Road, on the west, to Center Street Road, School Road, and on the north to Salona Wordy and the hills. District was formed in 1980 when it assumed ownership of Rancho La Postas Mutual Water Company, this particular water company was in disrepair, and it did not meet the state requirements for the storage and water supply, district was formed at the request of the mutual water company, since then, as a public water company, we were able to get grants and low-interest loans, we were able to complete several capital projects to bring the system into compliance with the state minimum requirements, and we are able to provide reliable water supply to our customers. These are the district facilities, I'm not going to go through the list, you can see how many, 56 miles of lines, pump stations, groundwater wells, our wells are about 1,200 feet deep, we pump quite a bit deep to higher elevations, and we inherited the aging infrastructure from the mutual water company, few years ago, we looked at replacement program, 20% of our water lines are more than 60 years old, under 20% are more than 50 years old, and we have had several meetings with the community, public meetings, with advisory committee meetings, in year 2003, we brought this recommendation to your board, your board has approved pay-as-you-go option, and we have been replacing the water lines with some of the water rates, as of now, we have spent $1.5 million in replacing old water lines. Cayegus Metropolitan Water District have constructed what's known as a La Postas based in aquifer storage recovery program at about $75 million in eastern county, that's west of city of Moore Park, and in 1995, your board approved an agreement between the District 19 and also Cayegus Mutual Water District, where we have participated in buying imported water at a lower cost in lieu of pumping, in exchange, we have transferred our allocations to Cayegus, so they could pump at a future date during emergencies, so far, we have helped the Cayegus and the other eastern Ventura County purveyors by storing about 25,000 acre-feet in underground storage, we used to purchase groundwater storage GSP water at a lower cost than what it was costing us for pumping our own water, and as far as the water supply, until 12 years ago, when we were participating in the GSP program, we were importing almost 95% of our water supply, now that federal code has restricted water supply from Northern California, we have switched back to pumping our own water, that means 80% of the water comes from groundwater wells, balance of the 20% comes from imported supplies. As I reported to you in last meeting, Cayegus also interrupted what's called the Ag program, by that interruption, district also lost about $72,000 per year of Ag credits from Cayegus, and as far as the local groundwater, they are managed by Foxconn Groundwater Management Agency, and these groundwater basins are overdrafted, and GMA is trying to bring them to safe yields, in that effort, they have issued allocations to all of the pumpers, including Waterwood District Number 19, if we were to exceed our allocations, we'll be penalized $950 per acre-foot. There was some discussion about Ag water, how our Ag... Until that time, we are managing the water quality by flushing the system more aggressively. And these are the factors impacting the water rates, Cuyegus water rate increase, Edison rate increase, loss of annual ag credit, loss of GSP credit, and also GMA penalties if district were to exceed the allocation. Here is a chart of the district's annual expenditures for fiscal year '09. Our total expenditure is about $2.01 million and, I'm sorry. Between imported and local water, we spend more than 55% of the total cost of the total budget, and about 1% of our costs go towards permit compliance, and the county agency serves about 5% of the total cost. This includes the cost allocation and also ISF charges that are paid to CEO, county council, orders controllers office, GSA, ITS, and also Public Works Agency Central Services portion of our costs. And about 11% goes to our system replacement. That leaves about less than 28%, which equates to about 4.5% per year. And that 4.5% per year are the one who work at the Moore Park office. That includes management, administration, it includes engineers and operators, and also lab technicians who test the water quality. This is a summarization of a rate survey we did in September of 2008. Within Ventura County, there are more than 160 water companies. Majority of them are mutual water companies. And as you can see in this chart, the average water rate is about $821 as of September 2008. District 19 is third from the bottom. The water rates are all over the place. If you look at the top, one is the city of Fillmore. Even though they have 100% local water, it's my understanding they are doing the wellhead treatment to improve the water quality for the residents. If you look on the bottom, city of Camarillo, they're on the bottom of the list. However, they are also constructing wellhead treatment, and also they pump from shallow groundwater compared to our District 19 groundwater pumping. In addition, Camarillo also has a newer infrastructure where most of the infrastructure has been paid for by the developers. And I also would like to point out the ag rates. If you can see on the right-hand column, there are only about four public water systems who comply with the state health department requires, requirements provide ag water. And District 19 water rates is one of the low ag water rates within these public water systems. And this also shows you who are the private water companies and who are the cities and the special districts in this chart.
Ready, can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
This is, this is great information. There's no question, it's much more detailed about. I don't think that the city of Fillmore and Thousand Oaks want to see this, I mean, with these kind of rates. This is unbelievable, the difference.
Yeah, I was also surprised that you're seeing almost twice the cost per acre feet to buy water if you're a resident of Thousand Oaks than you would if you were a resident of Camarillo.
Well, city of Camarillo, city of Thousand Oaks imports 100% of its water from Cuyegus. City of Camarillo has a great majority of local water where they pump from shallow groundwater table.
Well, Oak Park water also gets all its water from Cuyegus, and it's also considerably less than the city of Thousand Oaks. I'm surprised to see these figures. So I guess part of that is, it goes beyond, obviously, the commodity, right? We're talking about overhead and infrastructure.
Yes. Infrastructure improvements, whatever shape that's in. And I do want to say, comparing water rates is not straightforward because each district or the agency has different tier rate structure. What we did in this analysis is I took the tier one rates.
Sure.
For each district, that's how I compared it.
Tier one is the lowest rate.
Lowest rate.
So these would actually be higher if you went for the highest rate.
Well, depends on how the tier rate is set up in each utility.
Let me ask you one other question.
Yes, sir.
Real quick while you're doing it. The slide before that, you break this down on this, your pie chart.
Yes, sir.
And I look at about 27.8% of this, you have administration engineer, and you've got another 5% that's down at county service. You get about almost 33% of it that it's, I guess, controllable by us. The rest of it is, most of it's water, and we've got some regulatory fees, and then you've got almost 11% to.
Yes, sir.
For system replacement. I guess I'm looking back here, and we're looking at some 20 something percent increases. We don't have the same argument that we've heard before because we only import 20% of the water now. We pull 80% of our water out of the ground here. So we can't use the argument that Cuyegus is charging us all this money, that Edison's charging us all this money, can we?
No, that's why I put this chart together. If you look at what the reasons are, what the factors that are impacting the Cuyegus water, District 19 water rate, Cuyegus is only 17, that's, we import 20% of the water. 80% of the water is pumped from groundwater wells, but that rate is going up at 15.7%. Then we have a loss of revenue because of that.
That's going up because of the electricity cost?
Yes, sir.
Pump is what you're saying.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Because electricity cost. Then we have a loss of revenue because of that restrictions from Northern California. We lost ag credit we were getting from Cuyegus. In addition, the groundwater storage program where we were participating for the last 12 years, that is also, is impacting our budgets for this year. But next year, it'll be completely different after this year. Because of these reductions in credits, because of these large increases, we are recommending 15% commodity.
Well, it just seems to me that before we were, because of Edison and paying for all this water from Northern California, we ended up with about the same rate increases around the board. And since we're not paying for that kind of water, it was just.
Well, from next year, we will not be, but this year, we have.
So next year, you're not going to see this kind of rate.
Not this kind of rate, yes, sir.
Unless some other thing is put on the table.
Yes, sir. Well, thus brings me to recommendations. We are recommending a 15% tier one commodity rate increase and between 15 and 21% for ag rate and lift charge increase. Should your board approve the proposed water rate increase, we are estimating based on the average water use in the district, it will be about $4.45 per month. I know, supervisor, you asked me, what does it mean in terms of monthly rate? Actually, monthly charges will be about $53 per month.
That's, okay, that sounds more reasonable.
Then, we have provided a fortified notice of the proposed water rate increase to more than 10,000 customers, and we have received one protest letter which is included in your board package. And our office in Moore Park has received one telephone call inquiring about the rates. As our staff report says, district citizens advisory committee has concurred with our recommendation, and we are recommending that your board approve the proposed water rate increases and certain rule changes for personal services, as shown in our staff report. That brings me to the last slide. Based on discussions last public hearing we had, we are pursuing solar power at the Moore Park wastewater treatment plant. We would also look into providing power for our water systems like wells, booster pump stations for the water districts. We'll work with CEO and also with GSA. In addition, on a long-term basis, we are also looking into developing local water supply so that we have less dependence on the imported water quality, imported water supplies. We have a good resource in La Poses basin called South La Poses basin where it's inferior water quality. The extent of the South La Poses basin is from Somas all the way to city of Moore Park, between 118 to the city of Camarillo limits, that's extent of the South La Poses basin. There's a large quantity of water, however, it's a very inferior quality with high salts. So we are working with Cuyegus and other local purveyors to develop that water resource to benefit all of us. So we will be working with Cuyegus to implement that for District 1 and District 19 so we have less dependence on imported water, and it'll have less impact in the future on our rates. We'll also work with Cuyegus to provide a notification to all of our customers about the proposed 21% rate increase from Metropolitan for year 2010. This is one of the issues that was brought up in the last meeting. And this concludes my presentation. We'll be glad to take any questions you might have, I hope. I kept within my 10 minutes, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you streamlining that. And do we have any other questions, Mr. Paco?
I just have one question. Ready, you mentioned the mutual water districts. How many mutual systems are there in the county?
Well, the total, total water companies are more than 160. We identified 17, what we call a major water purveyors. So you have hundreds, more than 100 mutual water companies.
My purpose in bringing this up is that I believe that some of those mutuals, just as the Rancho La Poses mutual was in trouble in 1980, I believe that probably some of those mutuals are having some difficulty.
Yes.
If you look at these rates, if in fact, they haven't improved their infrastructure. And it just brings up the whole question and the whole issue about demands that may be put on your board relative to those mutual districts. So I think this is a key point in time to point that out to you.
I would point one thing out to, I appreciate, and I think it's very appropriate, to look at those long-term things that could be done, solar, going after the brackish water because you're not paying for that. However, you know, when you're going to go through a reverse osmosis process on that brackish water, that's going to require a fair amount of energy. And so we'll still be dependent upon, I mean, if energy costs go up by 15%, you're going to, you're going to have to have that for the, for the brackish water. But with that, I think we're ready and the supervisor.
Just one quick question. Mr. Ready, on the, on the GMA penalty for groundwater extraction, at how many acre feet of water do we get a penalty, or is that?
Well, so far, we have not exceeded our GMA allocations. The reason I put this out there is recently GMA has increased that penalty from 725 to 950 per acre foot. So for some reason, if you want to shift our pumping to the local groundwater, that's not going to help either. We just have to balance between imported and local water resources.
Okay, so we have not gotten a penalty for that?
We have not paid penalties for all of our water districts. We have been able to manage within our allocations. We understand that these basins are overdrafted. So as a public benefit, we never exceeded our allocations. This, this water.
Yeah, this mutual water issue just triggers my, my concern in thinking, how do we get a handle on that? How do we get a picture of what is sitting out there, who's at risk, and what the options are? Is that through our, our GMAs, through our, you know, how would we be able to get a real good picture of that?
Yeah. Time to time, we get calls from mutual water companies, they're wanting us to take over their operations and system. What we have been telling them is we'll be glad to look into taking over, provided they are willing to accept for water rate increases. One of the challenge is the infrastructure is not maintained properly, it's falling apart. Once we go in there, we have to upgrade it to the minimum standards of the state. That means you have to construct storage reservoirs, you have to construct redundancy in the system that's going to cost more. So when they, typically, what I tell them is, well, we think it's going to cost about $2 million for us to upgrade your system to comply with the requirements. If you are interested in that, I'll take the recommendation to the board. That's how I have responded to those comments. So as far as private mutual water companies, they do not want to see rate increases. At the same time, they have a responsibility to provide reliable water supply to its customers. That's the challenge.
Well, and I appreciate that, but I guess my bigger question is, how do we get a real picture of how those mutuals are doing out there? And are, do we, can we, do we see down the road in a couple of years with these escalating rates and the fact they haven't been able to put capital reinvestment in their systems, that by default, we end up with a morass of?
In the watershed protection district, there exists a groundwater section. And the groundwater section recently completed a survey of all the water purveyors in Ventura County. So we've got some numbers on mutuals and that sort of thing, but we didn't open their books, and I don't know that we can, but we'll look into that and get back to that question. So I don't know how, I really don't know anything about checking their physical health.
No, but I can, if I can. Do, you said that if we take them over, we have to meet state standards. Don't they have to meet state standards too?
Well, it's, when we take over, we look at the reliability issue, to provide the fire protection that's required for that. So that's the reason, most of these, in my opinion, do not meet the minimum state standards.
Are we putting, besides this water supply for people to drink and do that, are we putting people in danger? I hate to use that because they may not have water supply for fire protection.
Well, I don't, I don't think they're putting people in danger, but they may be compromising water service, for example. There may be a water line breaks. There may be problems with the water system, that they're not replacing or constructing a tank, water tank, for example. Those are the issues they need to recognize that costs have to go up for them to improve the infrastructure.
Okay, since they're independent, we have no, because it will fall back on us, we have no way to help encourage them to do that. I mean, because I'd hate to have the fire department out there and something breaks and there's no way to put, you know, fire out in somebody's home or something.
Well, one way we could help them is if, given mutual water companies interested to become a public water system, we could look for some grants, helping them to get some grants and get some low interest loans. Recently, we had a Strickland Mutual Water Company issue come up, and we have told the managers for Strickland Mutual Water Company that I will provide them the information about the possible grants for them and also low interest rates.
Mr. Chair, that's correct. You know, we got a call from Strickland, you know, Strickland Water Mutual Company that, and I think supervisors are asking a good question. What is the status of the, of all those entities? And at what point do we take over? And how do the, how do we monitor them? How do we, you know, how do we take care of the infrastructure and what's happening to those agencies? I think it's really important.
I think we got a big question out there that, that I think we, we, I think it's probably most appropriate to get our CEO and Public Works to come back and.
LAFCO may also be a source for this.
As I say, we did a LAFCO, a LAFCO review that, that, that only goes so far in terms of, I mean, it's a pretty gross look in terms of whether they're reinvesting, et cetera.
Service review.
And, but I think we framed the issue pretty well for our CEO and the Public Works AGC to get back with us with regard to that. Makes sense? Yeah. Okay. All right. This, this water district is in two supervisors' districts, three and four, so I'd like to look to those supervisors.
Hold my vote. Somebody else wants a second?
Supervisor Floyd. All right. And it's motion by Supervisor Long, seconded by Supervisor Floyd, and we're ready to vote and.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the motion passes. All right, we're at the second hearing of the 2009 memorandum of agreement with our nurses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today you have the second hearing and the adoption of the 2009 memorandum of agreement between the county of Ventura and the newly formed unit of the California Nurses Association for the per diem nurses. As you know, this is a one-year agreement. It puts them, then it will coincide with the agreement with our regular nursing population. It provides for a base rate increase of 3%. Some relook at the classifications in excess of that and their per diem rates, and provides base for premium pay for per diem nurses. You're all familiar with the, how we use the per diem nurses as part of the cost-effective administration of our hospitals and our clinics. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this agreement.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Nicole? Ready for a motion?
I would recommend a second read.
It's a motion by Supervisor Long. I'll second it to move along, and we're ready to vote. And motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And we are at item 22, and that's the Ventura County Campaign Finance Reform Ordinance. This is the second read of the. This, this water district is in two supervisors' districts, three and four, so I'd like to look to those supervisors.
Hold my notes. Somebody else wants a second?
Supervisor Floyd. All right. And it's motion by Supervisor Long, seconded by Supervisor Floyd, and we're ready to vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the motion passes. All right. We're at the second hearing of the 2009 memorandum of agreement with our nurses.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Today you have the second hearing and the adoption of the 2009 memorandum of agreement between the County of Ventura and the newly formed unit of the California Nurses Association for the per diem nurses. As you know, this is a one-year agreement. It puts them, then it will coincide with the agreement with our regular nursing population. It provides for a base rate increase of 3 percent. Some relook at the classifications in excess of that and their per diem rates, and provides base for premium pay for per diem nurses. You're all familiar with the, how we use the per diem nurses as part of the cost-effective administration of our hospitals and our clinics. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this agreement.
Do we have any questions for Mr. Nicole? We're ready for a motion? It's motion by Supervisor Long. I'll second it to move with so long, and we're ready to vote. The motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And we are at item 22, and that's the Ventura County Campaign Finance Reform Ordinance. This is the second read of the Campaign Finance Reform Ordinance, and we have Michael Schwartz here as the speaker. Why don't we start with our speaker unless we have any supervisors who want to make any comments? Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Michael Schwartz. I'm the Special Assistant District Attorney. Greg Totten submitted two memos to the members of the board regarding the ordinance, one December 31st and one January 6th. And since I did the research on the memos, he asked that I address the board. Our concern really is regarding the limits on contributions to independent expenditure committees. There have been several cases where federal courts have held that ordinances that we think are similar were invalid. And our request is that the board ask county council to request an opinion from the Attorney General's office regarding the legality of those limitations before the board takes any action on it. So I was here really just to see if the board had any question and to tell you what our position is.
Any questions for Mr. Schwartz? Supervisor Floyd?
No, no, no. I'm not going to.
Go ahead. I do appreciate you coming to speak on this. One of the things I think that we've heard in some of these memos is that we, we see some differences. And matter of fact, I had a conversation with county council. I guess you both have differences on what you see here. The number one thing for me is that if we're going to have this, we'd have it right, it would be right. And if, if there's a criminal charge, you have the right, you have the responsibility to defend that. And I guess you, from what I'm hearing from the county council, you can decide not to defend it if you don't think you can defend it right because of the ordinance. So, but I do think it's, it's important that we do the right thing. It's interesting, there's an article back, we originally did this back in 2004, and it talks about, the only mistake, it's a different one, is that they didn't get input from other stakeholders of the public before inducing, introducing this. And then the, and I think was another thing that says down here, the star shares the office holder's reservation that passing this ordinance too quickly. And I think that's kind of where you're probably at. Let's, let's look at this, let's take a hard look at this, let's get maybe an AG's opinion, let's do it. Because I think in, in the retrospect, we don't want to do something that is unconstitutional. I, I think that's wrong. And I think we make a big mistake if, if we do that. Now, it's an opinion if it's unconstitutional or not between different, different attorneys. But I think there's, we have a program that's been there, it's, it's been in force for a while, and I'd hate to have us do exactly the same thing we'd, it said in the paper, you know, four or five years ago, that we, that we do that. So the other thing I want to be careful of is that, one of the things we estimated back in this article, it was only going to cost us $25,000 or $35,000, and now we're over half a million dollars. I think, we always know things cost us more usually, not 10 or 20 times as much or, or whatever. But I would like to see us do the right thing, and it'd be great if we could put this thing off and wait and, and do that. So those are my comments. Supervisor Parks, you were on and.
Yes, I was, I appreciate the changes, as I mentioned last time we heard this, because it does streamline it and provides cost savings, which I agree Supervisor Floyd sorely needed. So I'm, I'm glad to see that this addresses that. The question I have is issues regarding independent expenditure committees. If this ordinance is, you know, has a severability clause, so that if that portion is seen to be unconstitutional, that the rest of the ordinance would stand?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Parks, yes, it does have a severability clause. And yes, if Section 1270, and I might add, Section 1270 is a part of the existing ordinance. So delaying this reenactment of the ordinance wouldn't change anything about Section 1270. So if Section 1270 were determined to be unconstitutional, the balance of the ordinance would remain in effect.
Thank you. And also thank you for clarifying that the issues that have been raised by the district attorney are, have been longstanding ever since this was approved. And so far, we've been seeing, and I, I agree, that it has been working in terms of reducing the big money that have been in campaigns. So, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Schwartz. I don't think we have any other questions for you.
Thank you very much.
And I have just a couple of questions I'd like to ask. Oh, well, okay, yeah, since I don't hit that thing. First, Noel, just, we've had, we've had this, this issue come up all the way since 2001. We've had this, this issue come up. I note that Supervisor Floyd was reading from the 2001 comments, but we've adopted these ordinance two other times since then, 2004, 2006. This provision has stayed in this ordinance that, all of this time. So I don't think it's a hasty adoption without people knowing about this. But anyway, could you just give us your opinion of, of our ordinance in terms of the, the issue as to, as to the legality of this?
Certainly. The, the law on the subject of independent expenditure committees is not settled. There's litigation going on in at least four jurisdictions in the state regarding campaign finance ordinances. We disagree with the district attorney in several respects. Perhaps the most important one is the assertion that this is similar to some of the ordinances that have been declared unconstitutional. The one that it is similar to is the City of San Jose's ordinance. There has been litigation going on over the, that ordinance and the independent expenditure committee limitation. A district court judge declared that, that provision unconstitutional. It went up on appeal to the Ninth Circuit. The Ninth Circuit reversed that decision and dismissed the district court case on the basis of a procedural matter. That is, the Court of Appeals said that the state procedures should be completed before there should be litigation over the subject of constitutionality of this ordinance. So it's probable that there will be future litigation over that San Jose ordinance, and perhaps one day this will be settled. But a thing that the district attorney's office didn't explain is the central part of this debate, and that is whether a provision like Section 1270 is a limitation on expenditures by independent committees. The district attorney raised the City of Irvine case, which is a 12, rather, a 2001 case. This ordinance was adopted after the City of Irvine case and was intended, is intended, to avoid the problem with the City of Irvine case, which was interpreted to be a limitation on expenditures, even though it, it said in words that it only limited contributions. Section 1270, we believe, avoids the problem of the City of Irvine case and therefore should withstand constitutional attack.
Thank you. And I just want to, I just want to be clear for the record. Our current ordinance that is in effect right now today has this restriction in it.
That's correct.
So if we postpone this action today, we still have an ordinance out there that has the same issue that's being litigated, right? So all, so I would just point out one thing. What we're trying to do today is get the Ethics Commission fixed, which is, we really didn't change the ordinance, we're trying to get the Ethics Commission side of that fixed. And that's really, I believe, the change that if there was going to be a debate, that's what we should be discussing because we're, even if we postponed, as, as is being suggested here, we still have that provision already in our, in our current ordinance. But the other thing that I think's most important to get on the record is this. There are, because there is, there've been quite a few of these cases out there that are being litigated, many entities, counties and cities have this provision in their ordinance. So it's not like we've come up with some radical, extreme, you know, campaign financing. We're doing the same thing that many of these others are doing. Number one, and the question is, why is everybody doing it? And that's, I think, getting completely lost in the shuffle. The public supports campaign contribution limits. When you put campaign contribution limits on of $700 to the candidates, some people will try to get around that by giving huge amounts, $100,000 to a PAC with a bunch of other people on a PAC, and try to get around not being able to give $700, and try to do it through a PAC that then makes independent expenditures. And the public would like us, if it is legal, to, to stop that from happening, I believe. I believe that's why so many entities have it, and that is the reason why it is in here. It is just as likely that it could be ruled constitutional as unconstitutional when all of these cases come in. And I think the public would like us to have an ordinance that's in effect, and it has been in effect since 2001. So we've had these arguments since 2001. We have had people coming to us saying, it's going to be unconstitutional, you're going to, and yet we have had, the citizens of Ventura County have had the benefit of having independent expenditure committees not receiving huge, big, $100,000 contributions from people. And that has been a benefit for us in our county supervisor races and in our races for the other county elected offices that are out there. So we've gotten that benefit all of this time, with the whole time having this argument out there. I just, I think it's very clear, if you ask the public, do you want us to keep this in our ordinance? There's no question that they would like us to keep it in, in our ordinance if it is at all possible, particularly, all possible that things can be real constitutional. So anyway, those are my thoughts. Supervisor Zaragoza, you're on, then Supervisor Long.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you and Supervisor Long for your diligence and hard work on this important matter. And the purpose of this ordinance, as you mentioned, is to promote public trust in governmental institutions and the electoral process. And I agree with the main principles of the ordinance, of the ordinance. And I support the campaign reform, financial reform, and I believe that campaign reform is an important aspect of promoting public trust in the electoral process and also in governmental entities as a whole. And I understand the current campaign financing ordinance has limitations, and there are serious concerns regarding those limitations. But I want to commend both of you for, for doing this. And I want to thank also the district attorney for, Greg Totten, for his perspective. The district attorney has written a thoughtful and detailed report on his concerns regarding the ordinance, and buried legitimate concerns. And the right to free speech, I think, is an important matter. Surely do not want to restrict people from free speech and similar rights. But I understand that there's some concerns, and, and there's previous court rulings that have not been in favor of this ordinance and so forth. So I understand that we can probably amend this ordinance in the future. With that said, I'm in favor of adopting this ordinance, Mr. Chair, for four main reasons. The ordinance promotes transparency, I'm not going to go through the whole detail. The ordinance promotes open government. The ordinance makes it more difficult for people to make multiple contributions, that I think is one of the biggest concerns. And the ordinance promotes the trust of our constituents. And I think that's extremely important, and I really want to thank the DA for his concerns, and, and hopefully if we're found wrong in the future, that we can amend this ordinance to, to the benefit of the community. So with that in mind, you know, I think it's a, it's an important issue, and I'm ready to vote for this.
Supervisor Long?
Well, thank you. Well, to move this along, I'll certainly put forward the motion to adopt the recommended changes and just to briefly say that this is, was adopted in 2001. It has stood the test of time so far. It is a civil ordinance that does nothing to take away the jurisdiction and responsibility of the district attorney, and I appreciate his review and comments on this. But as our legal counsel and advisor to county ordinances said, this has case law on a variety of, of sides, and until it probably reaches some pinnacle of, of Supreme Court, I think it, what we set out to do with this was to continue the public's trust, the transparency for all those engaged in campaigns, and that this continues to do that. The, the only thing is, was said by Supervisor Bennett, that, that carried forward in this action was to streamline the Ethics Commission component of it, to, to really try to control our costs and also to make the process a streamlined process for all parties involved in, in campaign finance. So I moved the recommended action on a second read.
I'll second that, and I'll second that with just this comment, as soon as I can second this on the computer screen here.
Oh, good. I do, I don't know if you have a motion.
You got a motion. Yeah, there you go. There you go. I'll second that, and the only comment I'll make with a second is that it, I think it's probably unfortunate that spending so much time talking about the same issue that we talked about when we first adopted this thing seven years ago, came up again when we re-adopted it, this thing, so for the last seven years, we've been talking about this one particular issue. We're losing, we have not had, I think, the same focus on, well, I think it's remarkable, we have a remarkable Ethics Commission that is coming forward with this ordinance. I think we have three outstanding individuals that are going to really help us be able to streamline this, and that, I think, could be a model for other communities, you know, to, to, to move towards. That's going to be, we're going to reap tremendous benefits from the three gentlemen with tremendous integrity, they're going to be on the Ethics Committee and the other streamlined provisions of this. So we now have the auditor wishing to speak.
I request Supervisor Bennett that the district attorney's first letter dated in December also be made part of the public record. It was not included in the packet today.
Thank you very much. Make that part of the record, and we're now ready to vote. And that motion carries four to one. Supervisor Floyd objecting. And we have our Air Pollution Control District, and then we go right to closed session. So will we adjourn from closed session? All right. Is there anything else that we have to do here? All right. So we'll adjourn from closed session and apologize to APCD for being a few minutes late, but we're now done with our agenda.